I think it was very reasonable of Summer to say that she's not for mandating or banning, just to be aware of what is being taught in the schools under the curriculum policies quoted. I have no objection to making it a permanent committee, or permanent subcommittee.
I'm certainly going to want the administration to comment as well. I, go ahead.
Do you think so?
Okay. I believe we do have a policy in place to follow. Perhaps that book is one that should be put through the, that policy, through that process. I'm a little surprised by what you read.
Mm-hmm.
As one school committee member, I would prefer not to make, not to contradict you both, but I would prefer not to make it a standing committee. As needed, if things flow through the process and it percolates up to us, I think we should do what we did with the last book and look at it in more depth with the right people, the right eyes, the right assessment. That would be my opinion on it, but I'm one school committee member. Go ahead.
I share a very similar opinion with Paula in that, in my opinion, I think it would benefit us to do it on a case-by-case basis because I think the people involved in that conversation may shift if it's a middle school or elementary, or, um, elementary, I don't know, middle school or high school and the dynamics of the committee. And so my fear of creating a formal committee that was standing, I think that's one of the challenges that we would face. I would agree that I think the policy seemed to work in the last review and I would encourage us as a parent brings it through the process to continue to review texts, but I would not be in favor of it being a permanent fixture.
Can I ask, and I commend you for coming and speaking and giving that type of detail and sharing that with us. I commend you for that. Is this book, has it already been started through the process? Has somebody flagged it other than yourself?
My juniors already read it and I didn't know about it until another parent brought it to me when her junior was reading it and my daughter had already read it.
Okay.
So by the time I caught wind of it, it was already too late for my kid. But I guess I was so pleased with the way that the outcome of the ban through Grove was handled and when I was sent that alert from Parent Square today, because I don't, I didn't, my son's not on 7-1, so I didn't get the alert. But somebody sent it to me and I was, like, that's what I'm looking for. I don't want, then again, I don't want to be misunderstood that I don't think we should start ripping the curriculum apart. I just really think it's important that parents are aware because there may be parents who find that content highly inappropriate for their 16 or 17-year-old.
Mm-hmm.
And there may be other parents that think it has a place in the ELA curriculum and they are comfortable with their student participating in that conversation, but they don't know that unless they're made aware of it, you know? So that's really what I'm looking for.
Listen.
Um, I said this the last meeting when the parent came about that particular book that was brought before the review committee. I have had the benefit of companion reading with my kids all through high school because I actively went to the ELA teachers and said, "What are the books this year?" And I got to read some books better than before and some books I'd never read and it was just really interesting. I didn't talk to my kids about the content of the books, but I wanted to know what they were reading and it was good reading those for me. But I also said last meeting that I think that in general transparency of parents would be improved if the syllabus for all the classes that the kids were taking, math, science, whatever, could be given to them, you know, at back-to-school night or whatever, so that just as a parent you'd be like, "Oh, they're going to cover, you know, differential equations this semester." You know, "Wow, that's interesting. I guess my husband's up for that one." They need help because it's not what we need. And I just think that that's transparency in general and if the ELA curriculum syllabus includes the books they're going to read, I think that's great for transparency. I think, I think that you should know what your kids generally are going to cover in every semester term, even some of the electives as well. Like, I don't think people realize they take a computer programming class, but they're not, they're only learning this type of computer programming and that. And that might be benign for some people, but anyhow, I think the syllabus thing would be helpful. I think it would help with the transparency issue. And I did companion reading and I found that very beneficial.
Go ahead.
So I guess my, my, my wonder is, is this something that we take before, like, the policy subcommittee and make it a policy that our teachers have to, have to give a syllabus at the beginning of the semester or school year? Or how do we ensure that it's, the action's actually being followed through on if we don't have a policy? I'm saying something like that.
I'm.
Our, our teachers are required to submit a course guide to the department leader within the first weeks of school and that's supposed to be shared with parents. So teachers aren't, or parents aren't receiving that, but that's totally something I need to follow along. But it is in our faculty handle.
Well, I don't know if we can really debate this because it's not an agenda, I mean, from the public, in the process.
Okay.
But it's not an agenda for us to discuss as a committee, which only brings something that's on the public side, but we're not, it's not announced to the rest of the public.
Right. I, I'm sensitive to that. I will say that.
Don't want to go too far into the administration piping in because it's not.
Yeah. Well, and I, I guess I look to you folks with some guidance. We do have, under our assistant superintendent, the reconsideration material, so it is.
Okay. We can cover any of that, sure.
We can pause if the session's done, if that's more comfortable for everybody.
No, I just didn't want, I didn't mean it.
No, you're right. You're right. It, it sort of dovetails under that as well, though. Whatever everybody's more comfortable with, if you want to put it on the next one or do we want to?
No, I'm saying pause until we get to that point in the agenda today. Pause the session.
Yeah, if it fits there, that's fine. I just don't want to get a meeting while I'm talking.
Okay. All right. All right. We'll pause and pick it back up. Again, I, I give you a lot of credit, Summer, for, for coming up and standing up and giving us the material that's in question, the way that you did. Approval of minutes of the March 17th and 31st, regular session.
I wish you to approve the minutes from our March 17th, 2022, and March 31st, 2022. Circle.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen, I'm just kind of abstaining because I wasn't present during that meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Donation request.
Do we need to vote in on it from March 31st?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say both?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. I thought it was one.
You're only abstaining from one of them.
I'm only abstaining from the 17th, but I will vote yes on the 31st. Thank you.
Okay. Donation request.
I'm Megan Ariel, who's a Pusser instructor for Silver Lake and Bennett. So thanks for having me here, Ann. So I received a request from a gentleman, Ron McAndrews. He is a former Hilton resident, current case resident. And he asked if, he said he was interested in making a donation to the lunch program to pay off any student debt. So as you know, lunches are free this year, but we do still have students who have accrued debt from second entrees or milks to company meals. Because usually if someone has something on their tray, you just let them charge it. You don't want to take it back off their tray. So when I told Mr. McAndrews about a week or two ago, I told him the total amount that we had for student debt for Silver Lake and Bennett, which was $239.06. So he did write out a check for $239.06 and $0.06. So I'd just like to add that to the school committee and ask that they accept that to go towards paying off the student's accounts for Silver Lake and Bennett.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Mr. McAndrews to pay off any meal debt that our students have accrued.
Circle.
Make sure we thank him for that.
Yeah, do we want, want to send a note of thanks as well?
Yep, I do have his address and I wrote a letter for, an unwritten letter to the people that he was named.
Wonderful. Any further discussion?
I don't have a discussion about that, but I just had a question and I don't know if now's the time to ask. Jason, you had mentioned that you were talking to a wider audience about, like, the potential for the lack of paying for food to be something that moves forward. I didn't know if there's any update on that front, or if now's not the appropriate time for that question. We can save it on the procedural part.
Go right ahead.
So there is legislation at the State House that Mary Rose Remained did last year that it would become part of the Chapter 70 direct-to-school funding, that meals, breakfast and lunch would be on the state diet, would no longer be on the families individually or on the district. In just last week, a bipartisan bill was put forth down in Washington, DC, to extend through September 2023, the federal program that we're currently under. That's really to buy more time to try and make this a permanent fixture for our public schools. You know, as mentioned, it, it is definitely in a time of inflation like this where families are struggling to make ends meet, an extra boon to our families. And we're seeing that not just at the lower end of the socioeconomic scales, it seems to be benefiting students throughout. And we don't have the problem with meal shame, which I know is not something we've ever had to worry about here in Silver Lake, but it does exist in some other districts. So yes, there's bills at the state level and at the federal level right now trying to work on making the current way we're doing lunch current eviction.
Did somebody make a motion? You did, right?
Yeah, someone voted second.
Seconded. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor accepting the donation?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you. Principals report. Mr. Beale.
Thank you. So first thing on my end is MCATs. So we had our infrastructure trial, which is our practice trial on Wednesday, which we completed. Everything went as expected. And our ELA MCATs begins on April 12th and April 13th, and that starts off our MCATs, and that's for seventh and eighth grade. And then secondly is our student handbook changes. So for this colorful sheet right here, there's just a few on the front page. The first one, and it goes to dress code, and it was deleting spaghetti straps with a two-inch window straplet for clothing. We were deleting that from our student handbook. And on page 19, we would be deleting the word shoulders from our handbook when it talks about shirts, mesh material, revealing, and maybe the term shoulders can be removed. And when it comes to the dress code, that was through conversation with school council, staff, and it just talked about trying to be more mindful of clothing and attire, especially when it comes to girls' clothing, like, when, you know, this, this day. So page 21, that's about the health clinic. And we thought that the wording change would make it more clear for the students. Instead of saying, "Oh, you have to go to the next period teacher and then get a pass", they go to the nurse's office. It would really just say, go to, you can go to the nurse's office between periods in cases of emergency. Other than that, you should go see your teacher, get a pass, and go to class. Thought it was a clearer way to say that. On page 29, it was just an adjustment where it comes to the 30 days for the ability to attend school events. So the original talks about three or more office referrals or one or more out-of-school suspensions, and we changed that to more than three office referrals, so you have to have four. And that also included more than one in-school suspension, and then the out-of-school suspension language would stay the same. And then on page 17, it talks about the school lunch program and just aligning our school lunch terminology to what is currently happening, where a student does not need to grab a school lunch with all five items now, they can choose three. And that will line that up. And then last is just cutting the handbook addendum and safety protocols that we had instituted when we were doing math and all the other things that would keep our kids safe at that time.
Any questions on the latest changes? You need a vote on this one?
I do.
I'll make a motion to approve the student handbook changes for 2022, 2023 as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, I'm going to circle back to on our history bee, the schools that went to regional. So we had Sam Blueprint, Elise McDonald, Owen Hughes, Jonathan Burley, and Lila King representing Silver Lake Middle School as they competed at the regional level, National History Bee, at the Charles E. Brown Middle School in Newton. And two of our students, Jonathan Burley and Lila King, have made it beyond the regional and is qualified for the international academic competition. That would be the school national championships in our land of course. So congratulations to all of our students that participated and congratulations to our two that are moving on to the national level.
And Jim, when does that national level occur?
Uh, but it, I, don't quote me, but I think it was like June 12th, but I'm not 100% sure. Some of the dates have been lagging a little bit because they, because of what we went through, some of these things have just been kind of re-instituted. But I am very excited about it. My own son had gone to the nationals way back when when he was at the middle school and it was really an exciting opportunity for him. When they say international, it's absolutely international. We have students that James was competing against that were from all over the world. So it really was a great experience. Most of them are from the United States, but definitely international students were there. So it's a great experience, invite new people, and that's what we're talking about at middle school, come here, have new experiences, make new friends, and then bring that home and talk about that again. So I want to congratulate all of our students and I do want to congratulate Jonathan Burley and Lila King for moving on to the nationals.
Fantastic. Thank you. Michael.
Thank you. If you recall from mid-years, we, luckily as a group approved to cancel mid-year exams and the adjusted first semester grade calculations, which are outlined in our handbook. I'm not looking to cancel final exams, but I am asking for approval to adjust how we calculate our second semester grades. Bear with me while I do the math with everyone. The way that our handbook is written in terms three and term four, 40% of the year-end grade, final exams would then become 20% of the year-end grade, whereas previously it was 10%. We think this is a bit excessive for a student's final grade to rest so heavily on one form of assessment. So what we would like to do instead, to better balance our terms out for the whole year, is to create two equal terms for three and four at 50%. The final assessment or project that is done in the class would be part of the term four grade, which traditionally has more interruptions than the rest of the school year anyway with testing and, you know, end-of-year activities that we do. That would allow teachers to continue to have the autonomy to assign their final exam or building, or not building projects, excuse me, learning-based projects and cumulative projects that they might do. They could even do a blend of the two now, because they have a little more flexibility there. Seniors with an A- or better would still have the opportunity to be exempt from their final exams. But again, I think it would just alleviate some stress for kids so that their grade isn't entirely resting upon one assessment.
So I just want to make sure I gathered this correctly. So typically the final exam is 20% of their entire grade for the whole year or just grade?
Normal year, it's 10%.
Oh, it's 10 for an all year?
And then the mid-year exam is the other 10.
Oh, okay.
And then each term is 40. All right? So semesters, but each semester, let me start that over. Each semester is 100%, right? So you have terms one and two are 40% and then your mid-year exam is 10, term three and four is 40, final exam is 10, right? To get your full percentage. And so we do semester one plus semester two, add them together, that's your average for your year-end grade. But without having that mid-year exam grade, if terms three and four are still 40%, that final exam becomes 20% of their grade, so that one test accounts for 20% of their year average.
So now you want to eliminate that, have it be part of your, the term two grade?
It would be part of their term four grade for this year. So each term this year then would have equal percentage rates.
Page 250.
But why not, why, why take the emphasis completely away from the final? Like, why not make it a smaller part of their grade instead of eliminating it altogether?
Instead of eliminating, well, we still don't have final exams. We don't want to completely eliminate.
Right, but it only becomes part of the, the term grade and not the whole grade.
Term four grade. Yep, so then we have four equal terms to give them the year-end average.
But typically it's separate, though.
It's a separate grade usually. But because terms three and four, 40% each, that's only 80%. So to get the other percentage for their semester two grade, that would be 20% instead of 10%.
Oh, semester, sorry, that, not term. I used the wrong language.
Yeah.
That's why I got confused. But I still, I guess I still kind of take a little bit of an issue with, like, I, I think 20%, that's like crazy to make that 20% of your grade on one exam. I totally agree with you there, but why eliminate that altogether?
You would have two unequal semester grades because we didn't have that grade for a semester.
So I apologize. Can I, because now I'm getting confused. What are we proposing counting the final exam?
It would be a term four grade only. And so second semester would be two equal term grades.
Okay.
Which is equivalent to what we did for the first semester. And then year-end grades would be semester one and semester two together.
Okay. I don't like that. Jason?
Totally in favor of it, especially in light of the fact that we've actually taken a stand against high-stakes testing before as a committee. The fact that traditionally 20% of a student's grade was based on two tests is extreme in my view. I understand for this year exactly why you're trying to do what you're doing, and I think it's a brilliant solution. I would love to make it permanent, but I know that's not what we're here to do today.
I'll put that on August weekend. Let me just survive this year first.
Any other comments on this one?
Yeah.
Sure.
I, I don't see how you can get around it now because of fairness or how you've handled things. I hate it though. And I hate it because it's not that, it's not that I'm a huge fan of testing, but reality is that the kids who are preparing for college, 20% for a final exam would actually be on the outside. And, you know, when, when we were having a debate about midterms being canceled, I went there for that vote, you know, my older daughter and so forth was obviously advocating not having returns and sort of thing. My older daughter is all upset. It's actually the best preparation for what you're going to have to do. And my older daughter, you know, she had a case of illness, couldn't go back to start school on time, sent emails to her professors, she's very serious, students are there, or anything like that. And the retorts that she got back, and I say retorts, were along the lines of, "You're still responsible for all the work and you're not getting any breaks on the test." So there's, there's a certain amount of, like, inoculating stress that the kids need to have. So mathematically, if I can figure a way to have it be somewhat part of the final grade as opposed to the semester grade, because being part of the semester grade is always distinct, I would do it. I just, I'm probably in line with voting in favor because I'm not sure how else to do it.
Go ahead.
I see both sides of this and I respect everybody's opinion on it as usual. I wish there was some happy view in the sense that I wish there was, instead of a final test, it maybe was a capstone project or something that would encapsulate either the last two terms or the whole year. I mean, they're not going to get a, maybe the ninth graders, the 10th graders have some time to wean into this, but the 11th and 12th graders, they're facing reality soon. And I, again, I've advocated on the school committee for years that there should be some graduating level of responsibility, more so than we have, and freedom of independence and flexibility and all those things. But I guess I could see it more for the ninth and 10th graders, but not so much for the 11th and 12th graders. So if it was being replaced by a capstone project that was replacing that final grade, that final test, I would be supportive. But just eliminating it and having it be part of the term four grade, I don't think that's the solution. I don't, I don't support it.
Many of our teachers do capstone projects or project-based assessments at the end of each term even, or at the end of each semester. So that's already a part of our, our day-to-day. Again, we give the teachers autonomy. Some will give you an hour and a half long multiple choice and essay test. Others will do more of a hands-on or collaborative assignment. So I think we do have a good representation there, depending on the curriculum and the department, just taking it so that it's not 20% of a student's grade.
I echo much of some of the sentiments that were said. I'm more in sort of line with Jason thinking along. I'm not a fan of the high-stakes testing, though I do think we need to ensure that we're preparing students. So in this instance, I will certainly be in favor both for mathematical reasons, logistically this year, but also I do think it's something that we should consider moving forward. But I'm wondering if when we consider it moving forward, if it needs to be a universal policy, because I do very strongly agree with Leslie Ann in that I get nervous to say that a 14-year-old and an 18-year-old should be treated the same in the way we grade them and assess them and approach their education. And so something to consider, if we raise this conversation again in August, might be, is there one policy for students who are enrolled in the next contemporary or, you know, is there, is there a way for us to have a more flexible policy that would allow students who are on track to be independent functioning adults in society, whether that's going off to college or to the workforce, but that are able to kind of handle some of that? Because I do think the real world is going to be brutal for some kids that have not had that kind of, like, ways of enough of the stress there, you know? I think that's well put.
And replied by that, I'm sure. So I have a freshman in college, she spent the last two years of his high school in COVID peck, right? So, and a lot of things, I think there was a lot of flexibility because there had to be, right? I mean, everything that we all watched you all put together was just, I mean, it was stunning to me what you all did to make this all work. And it was what had got him through the pandemic and it really helped support his social emotional learning, but it hasn't done him any favors in college. I mean, in the sense that, you know, he's enrolled in a regular university and what they expect out of him is what they've always expected out of him. And, you know, he's struggling in a class or two, and I think it's because he didn't have the rigor in his last two years of high school, not because of your fault, but because of the pandemic. So I don't, there's no way to blame that other than what happened, right? But I just feel that we're sort of continuously pushing this down the field a little bit and it's not helping the 11th and 12th graders, in my, my experience, as they've gone out of the high school. So I'm going to vote no on this and it's not because I don't respect what you've done with your, your, your staff and come up with this idea, I just don't think it's the optimal solution. I just don't think it's the optimal solution.
And we're talking about only this end of this school year, not perpetually?
Correct.
One-time solution?
But that being said, I completely support what Emily is suggesting in the fall, looking at what other ways do we do this other than high, high-stakes testing?
Any other comments from the administration before we save this? Does anyone mind making a motion on our side?
I'll make a motion to accept Michaela's proposal.
A second back. No further discussion? Okay, all those in favor for this one-year solution? All right. So that is gonna be two for, it's gonna carry the one, by one vote. Okay. All the, um, all those, um, against, anybody abstaining?
Thank you. All right, some school updates, we have a variety of school groups who have taken the initiative to support the people of Ukraine. These are all student-led, um, activities and efforts. Our best buddies group designed and created magnets for Sunflower Peace Organization to support relief efforts. Our allied health students have been collecting medical supplies. And our Red Cross Club has created, um, education and awareness materials to share with their classmates. And then our art classes have created beautiful sunflower mosaics for display around the school. Our Female Empowerment Club recently hosted their first annual Women in the Workforce Career Fair. Women representing careers in education, finance, medicine, law enforcement, mental health services, nonprofits, and politics spoke to students of all ages about their education and career paths. Uh, our students did a great job creating this event. Um, they took the lead in fundraising to get money for refreshments and reaching out all the volunteers to set up the booths. And they sent nice follow-up, um, thank you letters to all of them. Um, so special appreciation to them and their advisor, Ms. White. All of our freshmen and junior CTE students took the ten-hour OSHA certification. Um, earlier this month, instruction in both general industry and construction was given to students by our three certified OSHA instructors, Mr. Rafini, Mr. Arsenault, and Mr. Wilson. Our grade nine students were recently afforded the opportunity to visit an in-house Holocaust museum as part of their World War II unit. So big thanks to Mr. Peck, Ms. Knight, and Mr. Foley for creating this important experience for our historical history students. And Ms. Murphy's Spanish class recently celebrated Cesar Chavez Day. Students have been learning about this influential Hispanic American who was the founder of the United Farm Workers Union. She invited Luis Santos from Santos Family Farm right down the road to give students his perspective about local farming practices. Um, and he donated, um, a couple dozen eggs and she made homemade quiche for all the students, which was delicious. Um, so a special thank you to, um, Mr. Santos for sharing his time with us. And on Tuesday night, our senior theater independent study hosted SL Idol. First time we've had this event in a couple of years, thanks to COVID. Um, and freshman Chloe Deal took home top honors and fifty-dollar grant prize. Backed by Natalie and Jan, we have Kelly here, our student rep, to share some additional school updates.
I'm Kelly from senior high school, and some things that have been going on in school, the start of spring sports, and that's been going pretty successfully. And they also started Unified Sport, which is best buddies teaming up, and I think it's basketball and drag, are the two sports, and they partner up, and it's a shortened season, and I personally haven't done it, but it seems like a lot of fun. GSA is having a Day of Silence tomorrow in respect to, uh, the LGBTQ+ community. And you can buy pins as a two-dollar donation to support it. You can buy a white one, which means you're not being sad if you support it, or you can buy a rainbow one, which means you are being silent. NHS's, uh, National Honor Society is collaborating with a middle school for their tutoring hours, which I think you mentioned last time too. And that is starting. That's, yeah, that's starting now. There's a couple of different drives going on in the school, NHS is doing a food drive for the area coalition, and the KU is doing a pet draw for the Houston Animal Shelter, and that's so they add it.
Very good, and, and welcome back, again, you did a very nice job this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Christine, thank you.
There isn't a lot of issues here tonight with the financial, we're doing pretty well, our budgets, we're just doing okay, they're a very huge change since the last one. There are a handful of additional deficits, but that's to be expected because we have, we do the budget, it's our best estimate at the time. And reality is it doesn't necessarily stay in line with our best estimate at the time. We have a handful of deficits that are under just ten thousand dollars that we'll be observing in the categories. There are a few areas that I'm trying to focus on, utilities to make sure that where, and where we expect to land, and what is the true impact of. Last year was unusual, we're basing a lot of this year on last year, so we have to see how close to reality that is, and it looks like things are, have improved slightly this year. Even though we've experienced some other increases, those seem to have improved. Um, maintenance is an area we're always focusing on because there are always things that are happening in our building and we just have to take care of it. We can't let that go, we have to, we have to make sure the best we can. Keeping in mind the balance of our budget, because we need to, um, make some adjustments to some areas. And then finally, we'll, well, we've been talking to the schools and departments to see if there are things that they've taken care of, have they taken care of all the things that they had budgeted for? Are there some changes from what they originally budgeted for, or what we actually need to do this year? And then where will we land for the end of the year? We're constantly keeping our eye out to see what that means and the projects we can take care of, or the things that we need to defer. So we're just trying to, um, accomplish as much as we can within the budget funds that we have. Are there any specific questions on financial? Um, the other item that was meant to be picked tonight was the meeting of potential revote for the capital plan. And that is because our E and D has not yet been certified and you can't allocate it to certify it. I am waiting for that, we had a handful of questions that have been answered, I'm just waiting for that to come in. That will need to be revoked before we have town meetings. So I was thinking that maybe we have a meeting on the twenty-sixth? Maybe we can have a quick meeting just ten minutes before or ten minutes after? And then just revoke that, that same number, the number's not changing, it's just an official revoke once we have the E and D certification in hand.
Okay.
Can we get a copy of the capital plan?
Yeah, um, I can send it to you electronically.
We voted at the last meeting, but I don't think what's been altered since then.
Well, we voted, we didn't have the promise.
Correct.
Oh, okay, now.
You're right, we did make a few, few changes, we added none of it, reduced it by two minutes.
And, and actually, I, I think we could quickly step through this coming year's number that we're voting as well. You know, the, the committees, the subcommittee has reviewed everything over and over and over and over again. But I think we owe it to the full committee to just step through what is, makes up that number that we suggested.
Send a copy of the capital plan, we do that revote.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Assistant Superintender, welcome in.
Thank you. So under curriculum assessment and instruction, uh, contained in your packet is, uh, are some slides that relate to the Student Opportunity Act. So just as a refresh of the Student Opportunity Act, uh, required that, as chapter seventy increases were, were adjusted for districts to try and close gaps, that, um, each district would submit a Student Opportunity Act plan, which we did in April of twenty twenty. Um, the deadline was then moved, uh, months, I think almost a year later for districts, but ours was submitted, um, and so remained in that state. And on April first, we were required to submit an amendment, uh, which we did, and I just wanted to share with the committee, um, some of the details that we submitted in the amendment. On the background page, it, it describes what I just stated. And just to give you an estimate of the, the chapter seventy increase for, um, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, it's, it's essentially for a district thirty dollars per student, so it's sixteen ninety-one for Silver Lake, that's about fifteen thousand. Um, and each year, we're required as part of the legislation to update our, um, our plan, to track progress on closing the gaps, and that update is known as the Student Opportunity Act Amendment. So how do we determine the gaps that need to be closed? Um, inside of your packet are the data that the state aggregates for us. And, um, you can see in there that, um, our high, high-needs students, we have gaps that exist, and we will target those gaps and do the best we can to ensure that all students achieve at high levels. Um, high-needs students are defined as any student who is economically disadvantaged, has a disability, or is an English learner, or forward English learner. So under those criteria, in our district seven through twelve, uh, six hundred and sixteen students qualify as, as high-needs students. So I think the most important part is what specifically are we doing here in, in Silver Lake? So that's the slide that says, um, sorry, these aren't numbered, research-based outcomes that we will use. So that's just after the data slides. So inside of the Student Opportunity Plan, Desi believes, and we believe, that research-based practices, um, will help in the closing of those gaps. And so we select how we aim to close the gaps. So the research-based outcomes that we'll use are focused and aligned with our strategy to predict improvement. So you'll see the first one is inclusion and co-teaching for students with disabilities and English learners. Those are in quotation marks because you essentially choose from a, a dropdown. Um, and the ways that we're moving forward to close gaps for the upcoming year are the addition of the behavior to the middle school, um, the special education position in the middle school, as well as making progress with skill-building, uh, professional development for staff seven through twelve. So those are specific strategies that we're implementing, or positions to target uh, the closing of gaps aimed at inclusion and co-teaching for students with disabilities and English learners. Also, we're making progress with supporting educators to implement high-quality aligned curriculum. So our efforts at understanding by design and curriculum mapping are aligned with this research-based practice. And we believe that by having an articulated, well-aligned curriculum, that this will result in, uh, higher achievement for all students, including, including the students targeted, um, as part of these gap closing measures. And finally, the last research-based outcome that we will use is expanding access to the career and technical education. So, um, as through our Perkins Grant, um, we utilize in FY twenty-two and twenty-three, we utilize, um, Perkins Grant is a fund point five of that position. And, um, our, as Mrs. Gil described in our last meeting, our CTE program continues to attract, um, students, uh, both identified in these groups and also uh, students outside of that, and it's something that, um, is a real enhancement here in Silver Lake. So we wanted to put that in our plan as well and identify that half of that position comes from the local budget and half through federal funding. So these are, uh, the research-based outcomes we'll use, we shared those with the state, um, it was submitted. My obligation, or our obligation is to share that information with you. And then next steps are that, uh, Desi reviews these. When I met with them for, to talk about our plan, they said that, um, they have over three hundred to review and that they would respond if there were any changes needed. I, I didn't get the sense that there were concerns about ours, but they will let us know. And, um, then all plans per the legislation for all districts would be publicly posted, um, at the end of June as part of the, as part of the legislation. So I just wanted to update the committee on that we did the submission and that it was, we tried to identify those specific things that we're doing here in Silver Lake, and then also map them with a strategy for district improvement and with, um, kind of the pathways that they identified as well.
I just have a curiosity question around the inclusion and co-teaching for students with disabilities and English learners. I was wondering if you provide or, um, planning to provide like additional co-teaching, um, professional development? I know some districts just say like, oh, you're two adults, let's go in a room together and teach these students. And others provide more support around managing the adult relationship and responsibilities within that modeling classroom? And that can have a big impact on student outcomes, depending on how the adults are going into that scenario? And I did, was interested in how the district knew about it or planning to do some of that co-teaching model?
Yeah, definitely, and so it's, it's certainly complex, um, to have multiple adults working together is complex. So a couple of points, so Maria's, has helped in thinking about this from both the perspectives. It's not, we often say it's not just like a special education question or general question, but it has to be worked done together. So we have identified a consultant that we worked with back in November. Uh, her name's Kelly Mertens, she, uh, sort of specializes in the skill-building for all students and co-teaching. So she first presented to our, um, our parent professionals on how to make sure that all students in a classroom are being supported. We're really excited about that work. And then some of the teachers this year at the high school said that they've really seen a need for enhancing, you know, their, their strategy. So, um, Michaela and I and Jim worked together on bringing small groups together to work with Kelly, we got our first one last week, we have another one coming up on Wednesday. And then also we scheduled for our professional development for next year, full-day professional development, um, with this provider. One will be, we hope to be K K six, and one will be seven through twelve. So it's definitely a focus and, um, staff seemed to be, um, received the professional development positively. Um, so we know it's more than sort of a one-shot deal, and we feel like we found, um, providers that our staff respond to and that, um, knows that it's long-term multifaceted work. So very optimistic, um, but that's how we're planning to get there. We're even talking as well about trying to, not just that professional development day in the fall, but if we can identify our teacher teams potentially this summer to do a smaller group of the teams that we know will work together, so that would be our hope. So those are some of the things that we're trying to do to that end.
Fantastic, I commend you all for the work you're doing on the forward thinking there. I know that not every district thinks that through as thoroughly when they're placing adults together.
Thank you.
Now, I know there was a third item on the, on the original question. I think a gnome about my computer and deleted it, but it is there, so I can read it, I can pull up my email for the one that I sent there. For some reason, it's not on the screen.
No, you're right, it's, it's here.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, this, right, this is.
So you have.
Yeah, we're, yes.
Sending.
You, the gnome returned it. So the, the last item is the update on, um, the reconsideration of materials. So after the last meeting, um, I was asked to provide a little bit of background on what the process, uh, maybe the ideal process for when a parent may have a concern about a text and, uh, how, how best to address it. So, um, as someone referred to earlier, there, there are policies around instructional materials and reconsideration of instructional materials. So from the standpoint of a, a parent who may have a a concern or a question about a text, um, it would be recommended that the parent would share those concerns with, um, the classroom teacher first. And by going to the classroom teacher first, the teacher may be able to, um, have a discussion with the parent about what the concerns would be, and also provide that opportunity as outlined in the, um, instructional materials policy, that an alternate text or instructional resource, resource could be offered. In the event that, um, there's still questions, we would recommend, um, an additional meeting with the coordinator or the principal about that, um, instructional resource to see if those concerns could be addressed, or if an alternate could be, um, arrived at that way. And then the next step would be to involving the policy, it would be to inform, uh, central office and the school committee that the parent would wish for the instructional resource to be reconsidered in, in line with policy I J R. So that was in our last meeting, I think it was very helpful to hear, um, the, the parent's concerns. So we just wanted to follow up and sort of explain, um, what the best practice is or what the pathway would look like, um, to ensure that the concerns would be addressed at the classroom level. And then if there needed to be, um, a deeper review, or the policy were to be taken to its end, that it could arrive at that endpoint. But just wanted to provide a little bit more information about what the process looks like and, and what we would recommend so that the conversation could start, um, at the classroom level to support the needs of the student.
Where do we go from here, folks, with Summer's concern? And, and your daughter's already passed the grade that.
Well, she's in it now, and that's just what I was, I'm here, I don't mean to cut you off, but I, I, I understand like that's the way the policy is, but I feel like oftentimes the radar doesn't go up on the parents until it's too late. Like, the child's already been exposed, and they come home and they're like, ma, look at this book that we're reading. And then the parent flips out, and by the time they get through this process, it's too late. You know, so I, I guess I want to prevent that from happening moving forward. So like we were discussing earlier, if the material was given at the beginning so the parent could say, you know, this is, this is always whatever, these are the topics that we're gonna be discussing. Because for, for me, and I expressed this in the subcommittee about the grade seven book, is we all have different paths and we all come from different levels of experience in life. Some of us have had really hard lives, some of us have had very cushioned lives that aren't exposed to some of these things. And I do think that there's value in you having discussions outside of your comfort zone. Um, but I also want to be cognizant, mindful, and respectful to, to parents who have made decisions in. But I also want to be cognizant, mindful and respectful to parents who have made decisions in their home, whether it be religiously based, experience-based, whatever it is that they've made that decision not to have this material in front of their child. And I think we just need to respect that. And again, I would hate to find ourselves in a position where it's already been that, it's already, the parent already feels violated and then has to go through the policy and bring it to the teacher after it's happened. So I'm trying to determine what the best proactive measure would be. And I just think information is key here. That's really my position on it.
So you, the idea that, and it's in the staff handbook, that a syllabus needs to be provided at the beginning of every.
I can say I've never seen one for my kid and she's a junior. So, and that could be my fault for not maybe having the right app on my phone or something. Because all these apps with Parents Square and Power School and whatever else they're doing is too much for me. It's like overload. And so I really would like my kid to come home and be like, oh, cool. This is what we're learning in English this year. And it lists the books and the topics we're talking about or science and whatever it is. Health, you know, wellness. Because I think that's going to be an issue also as new curriculum is developing.
Just one quick comment and then certainly let me add. I echo that comment because I think as a busy parent, working, taking care of the household with a lot of responsibilities, et cetera, if you're trying to find a syllabus or material on different applications or what have you. My kids are out of high school now, but I know the crazy work life and life I had when they were in high school. For them to come home the first couple of days with something I can hold and flip through at night would be the best alternative for at least where I was in, you know, in the days that my kids were here as well. So.
And perhaps like in the email they sent out today about the so far from the family growth, there was even like a little disclaimer in it. And I thought that that was great. And if I can just find it, hold on for one second, I can tell you what it said. Because it was very like, you know, this is important, both the strong themes of empathy and peace. However, portray some of the more challenging aspects of war. Fine. And then the parent can be like, oh, okay. Like, and then it just says that your son or daughter may come home with questions or reflections. I encourage you to reconsider reading the book along with the child. I thought that was great. But like, let me tell you something. If I had gotten my hands on that Percival Wallflower book before my kid read it, she would not be reading it. No way. Because I personally think that that text is age inappropriate. So that, I don't know if that's a separate conversation, but I need to, that we do need to have a conversation about having that book go through the review subcommittee. Because like, wow. And I think like, we didn't even know, right? We didn't even know. And I'm willing to bet that ninety percent of the grade eleven parents in the district do not know their kid is reading content like that.
I would suspect you're probably there. I'm sorry. Leslie, you can go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
My reasoning, and well, first let me ask Principal Gill and Principal Field. Do you not candid access syllabi through Power School, correct? So like I can see all the classes.
On Parents Square and Google Classroom.
Which is way too many.
Yeah, so much. Way too many. So out of control.
I'm sorry, just for clarification about the program of studies, at least in this department and the English department, that the titles are listed in the program of studies, particularly for this class and for this text that's being discussed. So I agree with the point that it doesn't tell you what's in it. But I think one place maybe I'm hearing, we're hearing feedback to is that when they're concerned around titles, some of those are found in the program of studies, which when students choose those. So that can be a place, if you can't access a syllabi, at least you know the title maybe in the way it is written, Leslie. And so it's in the program of studies too.
It is good to know. But again, I wouldn't be like, based on that title, I would never in a million years think that on page thirty, I would be reading what I just read to you.
Right. Do you mind if I just look and then go to yourself?
One possible solution is a sign-off on the syllabus by the parents.
Right, because then they can't.
And that could be an electronic sign-off or it could be a paper sign-off. It could be.
Perfect.
We did that years ago. We did, that was a practice in the district and then it sort of trickled off because it's difficult to track down all the parents. And then you only sort of think the whole of our kid was a grade or a point for it, right? It became, you know, extra.
So just to continue my thought, I did want to know, like, I get Power School and I got, I couldn't get all Google classrooms, but that was very confusing. Because I think Google is just horrible. But it's good to know those are in the program of studies. Like, that's really helpful. I don't have the same, I'm not coming from the same place that Summer is. I think on why, like I would have been fine with that text, or I probably was because my kid's ready, for different reasons. Because for like, you know, you and I can go out and have a beer and we can talk about why. But I think that that's actually productive in some way. However, I still think that we should be getting more transparency on what's in each class. So, which has really nothing to do with updating reconsideration of materials.
I want this to be aside, just keep them the information, right?
Go ahead, Karen. You had a comment and then I think just.
Yeah, I, it seems to me there's not a lot in a way of policy change. I think there are plenty of avenues and I think there are plenty of avenues to make sure. I do agree with, I think it would probably be really helpful in the future for teachers and administration to be more proactive in exercising within the policy. So whether it's like Dr. Cruz said, getting a sign-off on syllabus or sending home a paper copy or whatever the case may be, I think that makes sense. I'm not in favor of a winged subcommittee, mainly because I think, I think the policy is sufficient to kind of base it particularly. On the subject, I mean, the experience of hearing that word is difficult. And I really grant you that. I want to tell you what happened in the blood grade when I was in. So this is nineteen ninety-four, you know, we're talking about thirty years ago. And I remember walking through the varsity football locker and headed for the showers. And I come into the area where stalls and errands are. There was a group of three or four lining and they were standing around. And one of the guys is explaining, so, yeah, I'll call her Jen. She was there and she had her top off. She's totally wasted, totally wasted. And there were like four of us and we were all going to do it. And I paused and I was sort of stunned. My mother, and I'm completely in support of the parental right to excuse a kid from practicing. I was the kid that, my, the one kid in the whole school that my mother broke permission notes and set up on S T D Awareness Day. I didn't need to go look at pictures of, you know, genitals with curvies and things like that. And I fully support the right of parents to do that. But I want to clear, eleventh grade, when this text is assigned, I walk in and these kids are discussing this. And I turned and I said, so you're going to rape her? And he goes, well, no, it wasn't rape. Like, she was willing. And I go, well, so what happened? And he goes, well, a friend walked in. So then it just all kind of fizzled out. So it's, that is uncomfortable read, but realistically, I mean, thirty years ago, I think kids were having sex in the back of their bus. I think, there's a coach at my school who went to prison for having girls have oral sex on him in classrooms in between periods. So a lot of what that is after, that is not a depiction, that it's meant to be instructional. It is meant to be really uncomfortable. And it's meant to be able to take somebody and say, freeze frame, hold out and look and think for a minute about what's happening here. And apply this in your lives because you are living in this. And so that's a different topic from policies. And I want to be really clear about that. I think policies are good. Likewise, if Summer does not want her daughter to read that, I fully support her right to say, you're not going to read that. And I appreciate the fact that she said, I also don't want to censor this. I appreciate the fact too, that I probably would like to know that that's in there so that I'm at least part of the conversation. But part of what I'd be saying in the conversation is this was my experience when I was a kid. And you're going to be in situations that I'm not going to know of. And I hope you have some kind of will commence when you're in those situations.
Well put. Extreme love.
So my question is, if they're in the program of studies, these books, like the pickings may obviously before September's on. Don't parents sign off on the schedule of your course selection at some point? In which case, by default, they come back and they acknowledge the course they're taking? Or students can just set that on, you know, their minors and anything else? Or a freshman can set their own courses and stumble into the stuff?
It's all digital now.
Now, a way to do it is in the program of studies and the parent gets a copy through Parents Square, whichever method one distributed, parent approves the schedule. And you can just flag some of these books as saying, sensitive material. And if a parent has an issue, they know that this book may have something of concern and not recreate the wheel here. Because obviously the materials have been embedded by professionals like yourselves. So there's a learning benefit to it.
I don't, I don't know if this is how I feel, but I'm thinking this thought, so I'm going to share it and then I'll decide if I agree with myself. But I'm uncomfortable. I feel like earlier in the conversation, we were talking about making sure that our eleventh and twelfth graders are ready for the real world and responsibility. And now we're having a conversation about having parents sign off on the books that their kids read. And so I think the onus is on us as a district to ensure that syllabi are posted clearly and include the titles of books. I don't think it's our and our responsibility to say that there may be controversial material because what I think is controversial and what you think is controversial could be wildly different. So where's the line drawn there? If there's a gay character, is it controversial for you? Might not be for me, but it might be for you. And so, I mean, I'll reenact. If a title is there, it is my responsibility as a parent. I can Google that book and do Goodreads review, Amazon review, Barnes and Noble review, whatever I want and find out what's in that book if I should choose to. So in my opinion, I think maybe we need a streamlined way to ensure every syllabi for every course is posted somewhere very easy and we're communicating that location and not, not I have to dig through Power School or Parent. I mean, the number of times I'm searching Parents Square for like, what days? My kids start in the week and I can't Google it and I can't figure it out. And it's somewhere in there, but they don't, like, somewhere very clear, whether it's our school website and you just have like, school syllabi for all courses posted. And it's just, you find your course and you click on it and it's there. I'm not sure of the solution because I don't know our platform so well enough. But I think, in my opinion, at that point, our responsibility is over. It is then on the parent to go find that syllabi if they want to know what their child is doing, to search those books on the internet, to read those books, if they should choose to do so. If they don't do that till after, that is an unfortunate situation. But if we want to teach kids to be in the real world, I don't know that having a parent sign off on a school, like, that just doesn't feel like a jive or the same message of the responsibility and the ownership of their own curriculum and education. And it seems like just logistically a nightmare of filing the pieces of paper and the kid doesn't bring it in. And I'm kind of, I mean, I'm not good at that part of parenting. So I know for myself, not because I didn't want my kid to read it, but that paper probably would not make it back to you. So I just would be wary of us overstepping in response. I do think we should make sure that we have a very clear syllabi posting and parents know from the start and every single year they're reminded, review your child's syllabi. We encourage you to engage in their, you know, conversations about their, and you can find everything here. And then beyond that, place it on parents. And then the caveat to that is I also think that parents should follow the process and would be happy to sit in review committees to read those books as they come up. I'm just not comfortable with like, the idea of a standing committee for the reasons stated earlier, that I think it's better to select the committee around the text and have the appropriate personnel there for that.
Listen.
If you're not agreeing with yourself, I'm going to agree with you. But I also wanted to just say, Gordon, I appreciate you sharing that with us. When I used the very simplistic term that I thought that reading that text is productive, that's exactly what I meant. But I appreciate you going into it more than I did. And I would not support a standing committee better.
Any other comments?
Oh, certainly. I also agree with what Mr. Ross said. It is a very uncomfortable topic, but I think it is necessary to know at that age as you become an adult, you know? Like, it's something that you should know in kind of learning like, hey, this is wrong. And I think it's better to read it in a setting of a book, which you know is special than the experience that you have.
I have two comments. First of all, you're a wonderful asset to these discussions and I enjoy having you here as I think the rest of the committee does. You're meaningful in what you said. One of the reasons I continue to enjoy my experience on this committee is because we can have honest, intelligent, thoughtful, meaningful conversations. And everybody here tonight played their role in it and I want to thank you. This was a robust discussion we hashed out. An uncomfortable subject and came to some reasonable thoughts and suggestions. And I want to thank every member for sharing what they did.
Respectfully.
Respectfully, and that's, that's the ground, that's the basis for this committee. Agreed. Thank you all. Okay.
Dr. Cruz.
So that's a tough act to model by. But I'd like to ask the chair, if she would please recognize Marie Raible for us to give us an update on the Tier Focus Monitoring Report for Special Education.
Thanks, Dr. Cruz. So school districts are reviewed every three years through the Tier Focus Monitoring process through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This review emphasizes elements most tied to student outcomes and alternates their focus of each review. So every three years with a different set of criteria that they look at. The purpose of the TFM is to review and monitor compliance with regulatory requirements focusing on special education and civil rights. This year's special education review focused on I E P process, I E P timelines, special education programs and services, as well as proportionate share and equitable services. In each of the thirty-six areas reviewed, Desi assigns a rating of commendable, implemented, partially implemented or not implemented. Thirty-five of the thirty-six areas were noted to solidly fall in the implemented category. Just one area was noted to fall in the partially implemented category. And this pertained to procedures used or provide services to eligible students enrolled in private school at parent expense. And since this particular criteria was noted to fall partially implemented, we will now be required to submit a corrected action plan that Desi refers to as Continuous Improvement Monitoring Plan for this category. So every student has an obligation to locate and evaluate students with disabilities that are either homeschooled or enrolled in private school at parent expense, that are, the private schools located within the school boundaries. So for us, we're looking at Sacred Heart School in Kingston. So the districts are to calculate and spend a proportionate share of the federal special education I D E A grant funds to provide equitable special education services to the eligible students. So the first step in this process is to identify all the eligible students. Eligible students are those students that have been identified as having a disability and with those families that we have obtained parental consent to have consultation with. So the calculation of the number of students are added directly into the two forty grant application. And embedded in that application is a formula that calculates the amount of funds that we must reserve for proportional equitable services, again, to these eligible students. So for example, I refer back to the October one census to get a snapshot of who the eligible students might be. And through that process, as of last October first, we had four students attending Sacred Heart that were either from Halifax, Kingston or Plimpton. And we have six students, either Halifax, Kingston or Plimpton, that are homeschooled. So now that we've identified the eligible students, the next step in the process is to engage in meaningful consultation with these families of homeschooled students and with the parents and the private school representatives from Sacred Heart. The purpose of the meaningful consult is to discuss what, if any, funding would help to ensure that these students receive equitable services. So at the. So, at the end of this process, the district is to obtain written affirmation of the consultation, and then to draft a service plan. And the service plan is different from an IEP. It's a standalone document that outlines what the plan is to provide the proportionate share funding. So, this very last piece that I just described is why we came back as partially implemented in that particular category. So, we're not fully implemented, because we haven't, we haven't completely taken it to the next step in terms of that meaningful consult, the, the written affirmations. So, all of that will be part of the corrective action plan that we do, will be noting the procedures for equitable services, the description of the internal monitoring for this process moving forward, what the consultation agendas look like, samples of the signed written affirmations, and examples of our attempts to outreach to our homeschool and private school families, and also our service plans. This final report is available on the DESI website, and it's also, it's a public document, and it was also included in your package.
Go ahead. So, having been in this, is there a reason why you're only looking at Sacred Heart?
It's the only private school in our geographic boundaries.
But that's not the requirement, right?
Yes, it is the requirement.
So, if kids go to DCHi, is it learning, or something like that? That doesn't matter, does it not?
Because that private school's not located in our geographic boundary. So, in other words, say Archbishop Williams, which is located in Braintree. Braintree Public Schools needs to have a meaningful consultation with Archbishop Williams and all of the students that attend there, and that includes students from Kingston, Plimpton, and Halifax that have IEPs, as long as we have parent consent to collaborate.
So, just to continue. I'm interested in learning more about this, because the only private school in the district, in the geographic region is a religious school. And so, when our child had an IEP in this district, and he chose to go out of district because he was not being serviced correctly after several deviations, and prior to, because you're afraid. Servicing him over in Duxbury was a problem. And the only choice was a religious school, which we were not choosing, because we couldn't service his needs over there either, or frankly, wouldn't service his needs over there, because they don't generally do that.
There's no obligation.
There's no obligation for them to do that. So, but at Bay Farm, he all of a sudden was out of your geography, but also not responsible by Duxbury's students. So, there's a, what do we call that in Medicare? Donut? What happens then? Like, I just don't think that doing service, I mean, I know maybe this is the letter of the law, but I don't think we're doing service to our student age population if we are just limiting ourselves to the one private school that happens to be in our geography. Believe me, Gordon, I know there needs to be some geographic limit to that, but that's a real problem. So what if there were no private schools in your geography, and you had an IEP student that was pulled out? What if Sacred Heart wasn't even here? Do we just, as a school district, do we just absolve ourselves of the responsibility of a resident? So I'm, this really greatly concerns me. I mean, it doesn't affect me anymore, but I don't want it to have the same problem happen to the students, because they don't happen to go to Sacred Heart.
This is merely for the, the calculation, for the funding for proportionate share under IDEA. So, it's really just the math part of it, to figure out how much money the district has to provide to the students within the region that are maybe attending either, as I said, homeschool or private school through parent expense.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with actually servicing them, it just has to be calculations of credit fund?
As you, there, there is still a service priority, an obligation for us, for any of the students that reside in Kingston, Plimpton, Halifax.
But the only solution to date has been that the student has to, generally speaking, unless they're in a substantially separate environment, because I'm on PACC, so I can't get that, which is meeting tonight, so we'll have a report this, I'm here. I know, well, Shirley's there, so. But there's also no requirement, I mean, I'm sorry, that student who is out at a private school, who is on an IEP that's not getting serviced, the only option is to take that student out of their school in the middle of the school day, drive them to our district so they can get serviced. I mean, it is, and then, it's just untenable. What do you do, like, oh, from 10:00 to 10:30, I gotta go, someone's gonna pick you up in Duxbury, because you don't provide transportation either. I gotta drive you over to the middle school, so that you can go see the school psychologist or the title lead reader or whatever, and then someone's gonna drive you back to your school over there. This is the way everybody knows this, but I mean, this is really the way that on a daily basis it works. And so, and it's untenable. For not only the families aside, but the students, who stays completely disrupted. And so, what most families decide to do is, they just don't service their kid. So, I mean, is there any solution to this in this partially implemented thing, not just to be Sacred Heart, that has no obligation to service the children anyhow, because they don't have to? So...
I think because Sacred Heart has no obligation to service the child, that's why DESI wanted to make sure that we had something like proportionate share, so that we could still have that outreach. DESI is silent when it comes to schools like Montessori. So, I don't know if, if Duxbury would count Montessori in their proportionate share, but it would be for the town of Duxbury to do that, because they're not located in our geographic boundary. So I can't answer specifically the Montessori question.
Yeah. No, I don't care about the Mont, I'm just saying any, any situation.
Right.
Because, I mean, I know that we, everybody goes to town meeting every year, and they're concerned about how much of our budget goes to special ed. And they are, right? You know, as school committee, we advocate for those children. They are a very important part of our population, and they need to be serviced. But the fact that when they're, they don't go to a substantially separate environment, and the school district's not providing what they need, they generally fall through the cracks.
And I have to say, it's been, within the last two or three years, that the regulations regarding proportionate share and equitable services have really been more clarified for districts than they ever have in the past. So, I don't, optimistically speaking, moving forward, I think we have, we have the most clarification that we've ever had when it comes to proportionate share, and everyone still has a lot of questions.
I think it's kind of interesting that, I, I, we talked a lot about this in our Halifax elementary school committee meeting, because I was sort of trying to feel out the details of it, because I didn't really understand, and I thought it was kind of weird too, but now that you bring up that point. So, you, you mean to say that, like, a child from Braintree can go to Silver Lake, and we have, we are obligated to service the child because they're going to school in our district, but not that they're from our district?
So, if a child...
Or the money is going?
So, if a student in Braintree, who's eligible, meaning they have an IEP, and we have written consent to communicate with the family. If that student from Braintree is attending Sacred Heart, there is the opportunity for them to access IDEA funding. But then, there has to be a conversation, a mutual conversation between Braintree and Silver Lake, in terms of how best to meet the needs of that student. So technically, that student from Braintree that is attending Sacred Heart, if they were due for three-year reevaluation, they actually could come to Kingston to have that evaluation done, instead of going back to Braintree. It is extremely s- layered.
So, in, in Leslie Anne's situation, or that she presented, it really was at the fault of, that, of Duxbury, that they...
Having Duxbury, they don't have an IEP.
That's where the meaningful consultation needs to come in. So every year, I'm responsible to reach out to the private schools to, to, and, and we track those. Karen helps me enormously to collect that information, because we do chat, track on the Child Find, all of the students in our communities that are out of homeschool or attending various private schools, some of which it could be Sacred Car- Heart, it could be Sevierian, it could be Archie's, it could be anywhere. But if they're from our community, we, we do know where they're heading. So it's my obligation, when I write that grant, to incorporate everything that I know under Child Find into that calculation of the IDEA grant, so we can calculate proportionate share.
So I just find it so interesting, though, it's very different from, like, when you have, like, a, like, a special needs child that needs to go out of district, like, that money we're responsible for, because the child lives in our district, so we have to meet the financial obligation, transportation, education, whatever it may be, for wherever that child needs to go, even if it's across the country. But it's not the same if they have an IEP. Like, so, so...
That child does have an IEP. It's just the environment in which they need to be in to make effective progress, or whatever. Needs to be somewhere.
But it's the financial responsibility of, of, like, if it's a Kingston student, it's our financial responsibility to send the child wherever they need to go to have their needs met. But, I guess I'm not, I guess I'm missing a piece here.
We need to hold some...
But did, I think there's a basic way that Marie can clarify some of what you're talking about. Could you just explain the difference between a unilateral replacement by a family versus a team decision to send a child to a different school?
Sure. And I think that that's, that is a piece of it, and I also wanna make sure that I'm helping some of her questions as well. So, so to Jason's question, a unilateral replacement would be if, if Christine, for example, decided, you know, you're a resident in Halifax, and you decide that instead of having your child attend school in the Silver Lake, and your child is a child with a disability, you decided that you want to send your child to a school out in western Massachusetts, and you make this decision all by yourself. And then you notify Silver Lake, and then we need to have a very long conversation about how we think that that's going to work out, because the district makes them very strongly, and usually does, feel very strongly that we can meet the needs of your child right here, or in one of our out-of-district placements that we would recommend a referral to. But when you take it upon yourself to unilaterally place, that becomes a very complicated situation that, that takes a lot of process to, to work out between the parent and the school district. When we have students in our system here that we're feeling we cannot meet their special education needs, we can look at the, all of the specialized programs that we have, then we do seek to find an appropriate out-of-district school placement for that child, so that all the needs of that child can be met in that particular school setting. Okay? And, and so, right up till this point, I'm talking about families that are absolutely engaged with Silver Lake, and that their student has an I, their child has an IEP, and we're working to figure out the best placement for their children. So the school is very heavily involved in that. When we're talking about proportionate share, we're talking about parents that have made a decision to either homeschool or place their child in another private school privately funded with parent expense. So there's, there's a little bit of a disconnect between what the school can offer and provide here, and what the parents want to do on their own. So the parents, for any multitude of reasons, have made a decision to either homeschool or send their child to a private school. Okay? The state wants to make sure that we don't lose those children, because they're still in our community, they're still our children, even though the parents decided to either homeschool or send them out to a private school. A private school does not necessarily need to honor an IEP. Some families may or may not even disclose that their child has an IEP. But if they're a child with a disability, then we wanna make sure that they're getting equitable services, all the services that he or she may need, whether it's, you know, through their homeschool programming or private school programming. So we reserve a little fraction of the money from the IDEA grant, and all we have is that fraction of money. So it's not like, you know, you get a car, and you get a car. It's really, you know, looking at the individual student and what their needs are. Some families may wanna take us up on some proportionate share funding, and some just wanna keep their child and, and with their homeschool program, you know, private school program, if they don't have any connection with a public school. So it's just a matter of outreach, consultation, and communication to see what they need, and if there's anything we can do. The funding, for example, might go toward some training, it could go toward some of our contracted services for OT or PT, if the student wants to come in for, like, a drop-in service for OT and PT, or speech. It could be for after-school tutoring. Sometimes students need particular devices that Silver Lake would loan to the family for that school year, and then collect it back from the, at the end. And they could participate in any sort of CPAC, PAC, professional development, things of that nature. Does that help? I know it's so confusing.
Just to add one clarification, though, to the unilateral replacement, because I, it is a complicated situation. But when your child is on an IEP, and I feel like I have a PhD in special ed after everything that we've been through in class, when your child is an IEP, you get a team. And the team is made up of the parents, maybe an advocate, if you bring in an advocate, and all the other people in the school that support that child in their IEP. So team decisions are supposed to be consensus-based. But in the reality, the school system has far more weight on the decisions of the team than does the parents. So, the parents might disagree with the services for the, the grade solutions for a child, and to the point where they just, they've got mediation, they've filed with the state, you know, all these other things that have happened over the years, and finally at some point, they just say, "I'm moving my kid." Even though it's supposed to be a team decision, they generally aren't. It is gen, a lot of the parents are very collaborative in teams, and they're, and it's great, and they work out great, and since Marie's gotten here, we, when we had a team, it got a lot better. Prior spend director, not so much. But, she's very collaborative with us. But, in the end, you know, I remember sitting in meetings, and we would say, "Well, we don't agree with that." And the six other people from the school, we said, "Well, we, that's what we're gonna do." And you're like, "But I don't agree with that." You're supposed to be consensus. So at certain point, you just get frustrated, you file mediation, you can't, you're disappointed. That doesn't mean I don't need to be serviced by the district. So that, that's the distinction. There is a unilateral or an out-of-district placement. Unilateral is generally seem to be for a particular reason, and not necessarily because you want to send your, send your kid somewhere else. So, I think special ed, because it's such a big part of our budget, and it's such a big part of our school system, deserves some more education for the whole school committee in general. Not just my feeling, it's not just the law, that's sort of how it happens.
I, I don't disagree with that, because, and I tell you this every time I have you at a meeting, I learn something new every single time you present information to us. And I've been around for, you know, get close to two decades now. It's very complex. I think it's extremely complex.
And Marie and her team do a great job. I don't want you to walk away with me thinking that you all, you are fabulous in what you do. It's just really hard on the other side of the table as, as a parent, as a team.
Anything else? It looks like there'd be follow-up in a few months?
So, the corrective action is taken in tiers. So I've already submitted a summary of what we plan to do, and then I have a deadline in, in later this month of, that will describe my first steps in terms of training of staff, making sure everybody has the appropriate forms, everybody knows what it means to have that meaningful consultation. And then the next report I need to file isn't until November, which is an update on all of that. So, again, it's, it's broken up into, in two sections, but, yeah, I've already submitted the corrective action to DESI. It's already been approved, so now it's just submitting the updates, sort of progress reports, if you will.
I do have one more question.
Um, any budgetary implications that come out of this wouldn't involve this committee or the elementary's correct or not?
Well, there, there really isn't anything for any of the school committees to worry about, because as I said, it's, it's a reserved portion of the 240 grant. So, I know in the calculation of the 240, what percentage I need to reserve for proportionate share, and then I appropriately allocate the rest of 240 to all of the other priorities that we have.
Madam Chair, I think it's only appropriate at this time that I remind the committee of the strong advocacy I've been putting forth for full funding of IDEA, which is exactly the funding that... the funding that Marie's talking about right now. Currently, the allocation that's set forth by Congress in the Senate year after year has been about fifteen to eighteen percent of extraordinary costs for Special Ed program, even though the statute calls for forty percent funding. So there is an act called the Full Fund IDEA Act, which is bicameral, as members of the Senate, we have the House, it's supported by partisans, Republicans, Democrats, independents who support it. We really need to pass this, it would be like the Student Opportunity Act on the circuit breaker, it would be a ten-year rollout to get it from the fifteen percent to the forty percent, and we'd have more dollars for all of our Special Ed students, including those students who get picked up through chat.
Thank you.
And Lucy, on that, Jason, it is a travesty that we have a statute that actually doesn't get appropriated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, so I'd like to begin tonight by thanking, my first thank you, Principal Dupiel, for his eleven years of service to Silver Lake. We will listen. And I wish him the very best in all of his future endeavors. As you know, I mentioned in my notice to families that I would share the process, the search process and the timeline. The middle school position has been posted, and we have started to review applicants, and will select candidates to interview as early as April thirteenth. The description has been posted on School Spring, we will strive to begin interviews as early as the last week of April. Assistant Superintendent Lynch will chair the interview committee, we hope to create a committee with the following representatives: two school committee members, two central office administrators, one secondary administrator, three teachers, one student, one parent, and one curriculum coordinator. Our task will be to recommend three candidates for me for consideration. The candidates will then participate in a second interview round and site visits, but with opportunities for interactions with students and staff to be scheduled. We hope to be able to offer an appointment as early as the end of May. That's our, that's our projected timeline, an ideal composition for a committee. I would ask that if, if anyone from this Silver Lake committee is interested in serving, if you would please let the chair know, and we can go from there.
Sure. I'll express my interest, I sat on Jim's School of Council for four years, so I'm very familiar with that. And then just, but if anybody else wants to.
You think so?
Yes.
I'm also happy to serve by another group of the department as well, so.
And we're in the midst of election season too, so who knows what our votes are like, remember?
I'm not a politician.
Without like terms of.
Jim first, or you first, for Silver Lake? Remember, Gordon Andrew.
He had a slide out earlier.
Yeah. If, if ever Lucas expressed interest, I'll circle back with him, otherwise, I, you know, certainly appreciate you folks.
Yeah, Lucas is not a watch man.
Yeah.
So the second item, I'd like to ask you to consider changing our current long-term sub language. Currently, our appointment letters for long-term substitutes state, beginning on the twenty-first workday, will be paid a bachelor's step one, dot, dot, dot. So the problem has been that, especially this year, and I anticipate this will continue into next year, that it has been difficult to obtain long-term subs. Our long-term subs do have bachelor's degree, and long-term subs that are going to be here for anticipated ninety days are required to have licensure in the field or the department subject matter that they're teaching. We always strive to find not only someone with a bachelor's degree, but also someone who has license or expertise in the department that they're going to be substitute teaching in. I would, I would ask that you consider eliminating the twenty-one days and start all long-term subs next year at bachelor's step one, to help make us more competitive in obtaining long-term substitute teachers. The number of leave that we've had in the district over the past couple of years, for various reasons, this increase, so that might be maternity leaves, or sick leaves, sometimes it's unpaid leaves, depending on, it's been a broad range of, of leaves that have, and the pandemic itself has created this staffing shortage.
Listen. Can I make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
Okay. So I mean, we start all long-term subs at bachelor's step one.
Oh, I can second that.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Do we know the financial implication of it?
Literally just a question, right out of my mouth.
Who would I have it?
There was one.
Um. I remember town except for Silver Lake, here we go, Silver Lake. Twenty-one days at ninety-five dollars a day currently, those twenty-one days is about two thousand dollars, whereas if we, those twenty-one days, if we start at bachelor's step one, will be two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So it's about, for those twenty-one days, it's about a three thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollar difference for each long-term sub.
And since the motion's on the floor, I'll just say that I experienced, from my child's experience, some very high specialty long-term subs, like chemistry, that are really hard to find, especially when you're paying them ninety-five dollars a day for twenty-one days. I'm not saying that every teacher has valuable, but I'm just saying some of them are harder to find, and if that will attract higher-quality subs that are going to stay, long-term subs, because there are some of those, you get a long-term sub, and then, and then others long-term, you know, then you're going to find other long-term subs, but if we can attract them to come and stay, that would be beneficial to our students.
Jason, do you have a comment as well?
Nope, was the interest over that one.
Oh. And any other, oh, sure.
Any, any long-term subs that we have to have this year, so if we're talking about thirty, I don't know if it's times.
I have to ask you, I'd say. I, I think our principals can probably do a better job.
Probably five, like, is it five, or is it like twenty, or?
Oh, no, it's not twenty, no. I, I mean, I think I'm on three for this year, three or four. My years were all twenty-twenty, so I think I'm on number four this year.
I have one. Okay, so like worst-case scenario for this year would be ten.
Just to add, there is sometimes savings, because oftentimes, if people are on a longer-term leave, they, they're not necessarily getting paid for that time.
So the budget would be up towards that.
Anything else? Okay. Are we going to adjust our budget that we're going on for next year for this, or no? I don't anticipate that. Seems like small, but I just. And but knowing that going to the beginning of the year, we could always, I guess that we can probably could work around that, or work that. It, it's so far from the material threshold of the budget, then, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that. So just to report back, all three of our towns have been asked to reserve an article for the tennis court project, the stabilization fund, and the towns of Halifax and Flintton have been asked to also include an article for the middle school SRO. The last item I have for tonight is an update on our anti-bias training. As you know, teachers participated in anti-bias training with the ABL in February. In March, our school community members were invited to participate in the same anti-bias training, and we thank all of you who were able to attend. We are currently working on scheduling a similar anti-bias training for our middle school students early in May that will begin with a brief grade-level assembly, and will be followed by an activity, and two additional activities that will focus on respect, anti-bullying, and fostering a safe and welcoming environment for all. At the high school, we are looking into a peer mentor program that students would volunteer to participate in, the focus again would be on bullying prevention, upstandard behavior, and respect. Earlier today, we were forwarded a memo from the Attorney General's Office regarding a call to action in Massachusetts to address hate and bias in school athletes. And again, this is in line with the, the call from the state, to make sure that our schools are safe and welcoming places for all of our students.
I have a question about that.
Yep.
Oh, which, which program are you using to implement that?
So the assembly would be representative from the Anti-Defamation League.
Okay.
And then the, the activity, and I believe our first activity is a quilt activity where students create a representation of, of who they are, and they form a greater quilt or community that could be displayed either at grade level or as an entire school. So that would be done in the classrooms with, with our staff, and would focus really just on students sharing who they are as part of the broader community.
And.
Another activity, just so you know, another activity is recognizing students for respectful behaviors with, with, which is kind of like positive office referrals.
Okay.
And a tree of respect, where students identify ways that we show each other respect and, and support.
Okay, so that's in the middle school?
Yes.
And the peer mentor program at the high school is being modeled and presented by?
The peer mentor program that we're looking into would also be modeled by the Anti-Defamation League's A World of Difference, and that would be volunteers and solicited with school administration, so the administration would help to select and encourage students to participate, but students would have the choice whether or not they wanted to participate in being a peer leader.
Whether or not they want to be the peer leader, but not whether or not they're the, the impact, like, the recipient of that mentorship.
So similar to our other clubs and activities, these students would be responsible for opportunities to prevent, present events, activities, and/or communications throughout the school. So again, it would, it would. My understanding is that it would kind of function like a club or activity, similar to other types of clubs and activities that we have in the school.
But these students aren't actively going into the classroom and presenting this material like the, like the, not the mentor themselves, but like the students in, I guess the mentor themselves, so like in the other clubs, you have to go to the club to be part of what the club is doing? Is this similar in that regard, or separate, like these peer mentors aren't going into the classroom and actively doing these activities, are they?
I think it would be, if I can time it, I think it would be similar to like our current clubs, so GSA, Allied Health, Red Cross, right, so students volunteer to go, to participate, but school-wide, each of those clubs, they share awareness, or PSAs, or opportunities, or fundraisers, so I think it would start off in a very similar way.
Start off in a very similar way?
Yep.
What's the goal? If that's the starting point, what's the goal?
Same as our other clubs, awareness and involvement for students who want to participate.
Okay, because this, this type of programming has been implemented in towns, like Hanover has this programming, and it's to the point where there's no escaping it, it's being jammed down these kids' throats, like they're going into the, these peer mentors aren't really, it does not as nice as it sounds. It's a very aggressive campaign, if you will, and there's no avoiding it by students, you know, who don't want to participate in it, it's, it's, it's very aggressive. This is not a passive, passively-run program, at least I can say that, for, Hanover's the perfect example for it. And so that's my concern, and I've expressed my concern with the Anti-Defamation League being involved in our school, I don't want them in this building, I don't want them in this school. I think that it's going to become a very toxic and poison, poisonous environment for our students, unfortunately, and this is exactly what I was afraid of, and this peer mentorship program is exactly how they wiesel their way into Hanover, and now you cannot get them out, and it's like their little soldiers are walking around the school, and it's almost becoming like a bullying-type environment, unfortunately, which is exactly what we're trying to avoid, and it started with the peer mentorship program, and, and that's my biggest concern with this. Also, I would request that parents have adequate notification of when this assembly is being taking place, and when these activities are taking place, so if they don't want their child participating in that, they can either pull them that day, or have an alternate something or other going on in the building, so they are not subjected to some of this content if they don't want to be.
I, I would just, I guess I would point out that the ABL is on the Attorney General's recommended list of partners for anti-bias training.
Well, I'm sure, look at our Attorney General.
And our Attorney General has also partnered with them for this call to action, so.
And I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, just to clarify, I don't think legally you can opt out of an assembly in a public school.
Is that true?
I, I don't, I don't recall anyone ever.
Opted out?
Opted out, we don't always have the, again, it, it may be something that we could, we could consider, but the issue will be staffing, you know, adequate staffing, alternative for students, it's not.
It's like any other assembly, yeah. But it's not like any other assembly?
Well.
But would that be a trend, that at least, that at least parents should have the option to not send their children to school that day with adequate notice of what is taking place, the content in which, which is being presented, I think is super important for parents to be aware of that, very important, in fact, like to see the material presented in the assembly to our students prior to them receiving this assembly.
So the information in the assembly will be similar to what was received in our training and in our teacher training. Principal Dupiel can send out a notice to, to families, but as such, there aren't materials to share, as you know, it was, it's interactive to a degree, I guess is how I would describe it.
In the middle school, but in the high school, this peer mentorship program, there is material to share, and it is not okay, some of it.
Right, absolutely, and that, that.
And I think that needs to be vetted to us also, before it gets dumped into the school.
I don't know that we generally vet club material, I mean, I think we have to. I, I know your concern, and I hear your concern. I believe that this needs to be approached like any other club. It sounds like it's, it's volunteer, it's, it's run like a club. I, I, I don't want to begin to vet clubs before the school initiates them, and I, I fully hear your concerns.
Imagine it on the other end, so.
Imagine on the other end, what do you mean?
Like, so for some people, this organization is racist, anti-police, and driven by hate, so imagine you felt that way about something, you would want parents to be aware of that, embedded, like, we can't just throw up a Confederate flag in the middle of the high school and be like, well, the club wants it there.
I participated as, as one committee member, I participated in the training, and it's, I honestly expected to find exception with some of the things, some of the material, and I did not. I found the, the training actually to be very benign, and presented in a way that was informative, inviting, not in the least bit abrasive or antagonistic, I mean, I, I went in thinking I was going to say, I don't like this about it, I don't like that about it, and I didn't. I found it very benign.
But that's your perspective and your opinion, and I will tell you that other districts have that gone down this avenue, it starts like that, and it doesn't end, because once they go here, they go two feet in. I'm telling you right now, I am firing the warning shot that this is not going to be productive for our district, and it's going to cause chaos, it's going to be toxic and poisonous, and parents are going to be very upset for some of the content that is going to come from this. I'm telling you right now, because it's happening in the towns around us, it's happening in Pembroke, it's happening in Hanover, these parents are bull, and they are rising up by the hundreds and speaking out against it. It's going to happen here. In fact, I will do my part to make sure that parents understand what is about to happen, and I will give them all of the information that I have, because it's super important. This is not okay, the direction that this is going in. I really hope I don't have to say I told you so, because I've already said it about this.
I was just gonna say, I. I'm uncomfortable with the prejudging of it prior to it happening, and I don't think it models what a good education facility does.
Take a look at the surrounding communities, I'm not making an assumption here, I'm saying it based on fact, and what has already happened in communities that have gone down this road.
And I think there's a lot of communities for whom that might be the case. I find it disrespectful to our school and our administrators that you're making that assumption about our community.
It's not this commu, it's the ABL.
Okay, so.
You lose control, Emily, that's the problem. You lose control, Emily. That's the problem is we are going to lose control. We are, you are.
I would respectfully disagree. I think I trust that our administrators understand the program that is behind the club, that is a student, an opt-in student choice for that club.
Is it? Is it opt-in?
As all clubs are
This peer mentorship?
Can she speak, please?
Okay, you're right, I'm sorry.
And I think it models a diverse opportunity for students to participate should they choose like any club. There are going to be clubs that people, again, we can go back to a gay series, there's parents that don't like that idea. There's people in our community that would stand up against that and, and, and speak out against that. But there's also people for whom that is a place that is home, that is safe and that is comfortable. There's always going to be clubs that not everyone's going to agree with or want to participate. And I think in a well-rounded and in a representative community, we provide a space for those clubs. I'm uncomfortable prejudging that the club would go beyond that in our school. I believe that our administrators and the staff within the school have the education background and knowledge to ensure that, that it's a club, it's going to function like a club. That's what they're saying. We trust them as we do with any other club that we wouldn't vet. And while I would agree always that parents should be informed about information, sort of as a broader conversation in our society, I'm uncomfortable with a constant like opt-out. Like I think, similar to our earlier conversation about the book, being exposed to things that make us uncomfortable or that are different opinions is necessity for us to be able to build bridges and have respectful conversations. And if we're always just choosing to be around opinions that are only like ours and around only people who share those opinions, it's really hard when we're faced in the real world with people with diverse opinions and diverse ideas and different opinions and different ideas. And I think this club presents the perfect opportunity for students that have very different opinions and very different ideas and ideologies to be able to have those conversations in a safe and supportive community. And I think, in my opinion, that's the very purpose of an education system, well beyond anything that is taught in our curriculum. It's those opportunities to have those dialogues and to have them in safe and comfortable places. So I'm in full support and respectfully disagree. I do hope that, that you're wrong and that this isn't an I told you so moment. And I think that we have the policies and procedures in place that that won't happen in our community.
The difference is, this is driven by a political agenda. This is not, let's be diverse and okay. This is teaching children that they are inherently racist and they are privileged based on the color of their skin. I have a very, very serious issue with that. And it's not about, I have a different opinion. No, this is toxic and it's driven by a political agenda. That's my issue.
I'm not sure how we address this in the school committee because we create the policies, procedures, and we, in, in this essence of training, just like we do with the book selection, delegate that down to the administration. So while the conversation is helpful here, I think we've got to focus on what's our purview, which is the policy procedures, as you brought up with the book earlier, IJR, whatever they were. So I don't think we want to go down this road of, like, micromanaging in a sense, decisions with the administration. And, and to that matter, the decisions of the Attorney General, whether you like her or not, that this is sort of an approved vendor, if you will, for this kind of training. So I think it's constructive conversation, but I don't think we have that power. And I'd love to see our attorney's perspective on that in terms of whether I'm right or wrong, I guess. Because I don't want to waste our time.
How is it being funded, I guess? How is this being funded?
We covered this, you asked this question before.
What's that?
It's covered under a grant.
Can you name the grant, please?
Yeah, we use title for the APL training, we use title for funds.
Okay, so for this?
Which is Safe and Supportive Schools.
So for all this coming up is also titled for? Because I can imagine this assembly's not free. Because these people are running a business to a doctor and their children. So what are we paying them for that?
Yeah, we, we're, we've identified grant funding to pay for the training.
Okay, at the cost of?
We have the quote for, I believe I
Not for this part, not the, not what we already did. I'm talking about the assembly, this peer mentor program, which I'm sure they have to come in and do some training for.
Peer mentor training would be additional for the training. But this portion is already part of that quote that Ryan gave you, which, which is why I said we're looking into the peer mentor program. We don't have that information.
Lizleyan?
Oh, are you going to move on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so So the final item for my evaluation, we will be sending out a summary of evidence with the steps that I have taken towards my goals this year and evidence for each of the standards in the superintendent rubric. And you will also be sent a, a template to fill in from the chair of the administrative committee team, I chair. And you'll be provided feedback and that will be going to Karen. She, she will be collecting them. And more information to follow, but that's just a heads up, but that will be coming out shortly.
I want to make sure we capture all the school committee members broadly before elections causing a trial.
And I would just add to that, that this process is one of our key roles as school committee members. And I know that in the past, the chairs have been disappointed in the return of rate of the evaluations from the school committee. And I would just like to encourage us all to take responsibility really seriously in returning our evaluations.
Agreed, underscored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, new faces? I don't think there's any school start time for this committee.
Just a sort of technical piece there. Can we change that to working group, please?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a subcommittee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we had that, yeah, we, we actually had that dialogue before. Sorry about that.
And is it always standard old business? Like how about our own business?
We'll find a more appetizing spot for it on the agenda.
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the school start times working group currently consists of myself and Emily, appointed by the chair, and Assistant Superintendent Lynch. We had a meeting about two weeks ago to sort of get ourselves organized because we were kind of embarrassed that we kept coming back and we're going to get set. Had a very productive meeting two weeks ago. We sort of just generally had articulated that our charge as a working group, not a committee, is to educate, engage, and plan. Those are sort of the tenets of kind of, you know, what we're hoping to do. Amongst the three of us, we kind of figured out how you parcel out the engage piece of it because we want to make sure that we're a diverse group of people. And representatives of the school community and students and everybody to participate on the working group. I think that is all under the guise of collaborations, which we think is essential to even discussing this topic. So at the end of our meeting, we decided that we were going to send out, and three of us, an email, which went out on March 31st, specifically to the chairs of the four school committees, because we recognize that working on this topic is not something that just the region can do. And if we're going to make any progress on understanding what the material is out there and engaging people in their opinions and coming up with any kind of approach to this, if at all, then we need to do it as a larger body. So we sent out an email on March 31st to the four school committee chairs, asking them for one or two representatives from their school community that'd like to engage in the working group. We also asked them to work with their unions to represent their unions with one or two members. And then we also asked them to collaborate with their principals and asking them to provide the working group with one or two members from their school council and then one student rep from the middle school and high school, ideally somebody, a student that was going to be around next year. So either a rising seventh, rising eighth grader or maybe a rising eleventh or twelfth grader, potentially someone in a leadership role that could speak on behalf of, you know, classes or their student body or whatever. We also copied the principals, the union presidents, and superintendent on that email. So I'm going to be as collaborative as possible. We have a few year-end goals. One is to panel a working group, which is no small feat. Have a kickoff meeting, mostly a meet and greet so that we can just get to know each other. And we welcome people with all different ideas on what we should or shouldn't do. To develop a work plan or phases of our work plans, sort of like how this working group would parse out the type of work, the topics, sort of what we might cover next year, just to come up with a phased working plan. And then to come back to each school committee and brief, ideally at the last meeting of the school committee of that year, which in our case, I'm used to lie. I don't know what the dates are. So far, I've heard from John Lee. Thank you.
We're in.
You and Colin are in for your union. We really appreciate that. We haven't received any responses from anybody else on our email. We do hope to get kickoff meeting or meet and greet on April 28th. I did a date, could change, we're totally fine with that. And the three of us, we again, I'm glad to see where we are with this. So quite a bit of progress. So I'm sort of hoping for a bit more response from the other school committees. If they don't want to participate, totally understand. It's a really thicky, thorny topic, but we think there's a lot that we can talk about in a working group setting, not even a meeting.
I wonder if any other committee is waiting for the elections because this is sort of a longer-term working group and I know some of the other committees are, are going to be seeding perhaps new people as well. So, Jason?
John did appoint Nikki Mahoney from the Plente School.
Oh, you'll be back.
Might have slipped his mind with the budget and everything else going on, but she did step forward and John did appoint her.
Okay, I'll reach back out to him and quickly send an email.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, but did you hear from the other parts of your panel? Assuming it's coming through him.
I'll talk to John.
Okay, appreciate that. Yes, thanks. I'm sorry? Perfect. I think that's sort of probably why some, either other pressing topics or you guys have a minute.
And, and so honestly, I just completely like
That's fine.
... my agenda that we had for Halifax on Monday, but I will send the email out to my committee.
Okay, awesome, great.
Can I give out a reminder for you? Can the chair give that? Do I have to give it to you or do I need to call it?
So the, the issue, the issue will be
Don't open the email.
You can't deliberate. So you have to be careful what you send out. You can send out a notice, but it, you might want to have
I'll ask them to contact you would not be if they're interested in that way. There's no filter, there's no back and forth.
Or you could just appoint two people because that's the power of you.
I almost feel like maybe you weren't there, but you have a committee member named Jennifer?
Yeah.
And I believe she volunteered to, to participate. This was upstairs
Oh.
in a meeting two weeks ago. I don't know.
Then I'll follow up with her.
But you may follow up with her that I think she was potentially interested in doing it.
She has four kids, that would make sense.
But I am hoping for, well, we are hoping
Stop it now!
Uh, we are hoping for two school council members because we feel that, the three of us discussed, and if you all disagree, like, or have another idea, we're open, but we felt that we wanted to get parental involvement, but we wanted to get initially parental involvement in the working group that were part of school, school councils because they're so involved in the school improvement plans and looking at all the MCAST and all the things that go along with them on the school council. So Jim, if you can, head of one or two of them that might stick around next year and then actually Michaela Ray, I'm catching you up and Or and then a student rep, like for instance, if you have a seventh grade, I don't know when your elections are for eighth grades, you know.
We have seventh graders on our student council, so I can take care of that.
Okay. And then again, similarly, no offense to the seniors, but since it's not going to affect you. Missed out on getting a diploma for school, potentially. Yeah. And then the other reunions. I, you were very particular, you know, we don't want to talk to your union. So we are hoping that you can facilitate those conversations if anybody wants to participate. Because I, I think John agrees that that's an integral part of this discussion at all.
Yeah, that was great. That was good progress framing it. It was a very childhood meeting. Excellent. Thank you both. Report of special committees. John, you're up.
Hi, everyone. So as Dr. Preet was discussing, we're going to be looking for a new leader. Mr. Dupill is going to be looking for a next point in his career. And, you know, we've still got a lot of work left to do. I'm sure a lot of my colleagues would want to reach out to him privately with well-wish and that kind of thing. But I did have some statements that my colleague wanted me to make tonight. I asked him to keep it to two or three sentences. Some of them couldn't contain themselves, so I hope everyone will indulge me. So eighth grade special education teacher Anne Rudin wrote, "I've always appreciated Jim's excitement and determination in making sure each middle schooler has moments to remember. He's always talked about creating memories for the students who walk through our halls. He has a great amount of empathy and compassion that we have all benefited, benefited from at one time or another. His departure from the lake will certainly leave big shoes to fill." Eighth grade special education teacher Liz McFarland wrote, "Jim, thank you for all you have done over the past 11 years for the Silver Lake Middle School staff, teachers, students, and parents. Your dedication to education and commitment to creating a kind, caring, and academically challenging environment are evident and greatly appreciated. Your departure is a great loss to our SLMS community." Our secretary Jen Stanford said, "Staff cookouts, open houses, back-to-school cookouts, haunted halls, Christmas cupcake bake-off, bowling competition," we still don't have the one that actually, "movie nights, March Madness, pizza and more pizza, and the greatest of all field days. Everything you did was for the kids of Silver Lake Middle School. It's been a great 10 years. Good luck on your next adventure." Seventh grade ELA teacher Anna Lewis wrote, "Thank you, Mr. Dupill, for your ability to know what classroom teachers need in order to be most effective in classrooms. Recognizing the smallest class size and small learning communities are what drive middle school has helped our teachers best reach students." Seventh grade ELA teacher Sarah Hannigan wrote, "11 years ago, I returned to work after maternity leave and met our new principal, Jim Dupill. Unbeknownst to me, in a few short months, we would have something terrible in common. We would both be parents of children with pediatric cancer. For Jim, the experience was in the not-too-distant past. For me, it was just beginning. Thankfully, both of us now have thriving children in full remission. Over the years, Jim and I have commissary about the ways in which this experience changed us, changed our children, and changed our world. From the moment he arrived at Boston Children's Hospital Oncology ward with an envelope stuffed full of gift cards from himself and my colleagues, Jim has been unfailingly supportive. Anytime I needed to leave work in order to take care of my daughter, he would tell me to go and arrange coverage without any question and delay. With Jim, family always came first. I will be forever grateful to him for his empathy, his flexibility, and his dedication to the human and emotional needs of his staff. I wish him all the best in his future endeavors." Our librarian Eth Casey wrote, "It was with great sadness that I learned that Mr. Dupill would not be returning to Silver Lake Middle School next year. It's been absolute pleasure and privilege that I've worked under him for the past 11 years. His absence as the world principal will certainly prove a real loss for the school and community. His philosophy of education is one of the most student-centered I've encountered. He weighed every decision he made based on what he thought would be best for the students. He went above and beyond to make the middle school experience a positive and special one for each and every student. He's created initiatives to help at-risk students and even worked one-on-one with many kids to help them improve their grades over the years. He sees the best in everyone, staff and students alike, and possesses limitless optimism and trusts that people will eventually do the right thing. Working for Jim has made me a better teacher and in many ways, a better person. I'm extremely grateful for his mentorship, support, and friendship over the years. I know I speak for many of my colleagues when I say he would be truly missed." Seventh grade special education teacher Jean Nastar wrote, "There are many important qualities that effective leaders should possess, but there are two standout traits that most define Mr. Dupill's tenure at the middle school. As empathetic and compassionate people seem to be disappearing at a rapid pace in our world, Mr. Dupill defies that ever-increasing model. Whether it's personal, family, emergency, or situation, Mr. Dupill's empathy and compassion stand at the forefront that every student, staff members needs. His belief that family comes first runs deep into the fabric of the Silver Lake Middle School community. By his use of the word family, Jim means each person's own family and the Silver Lake family that he's a part of. The other standout quality that he has embodied at Silver Lake is his ability to provide and model professional autonomy. From his first day as principal of Silver Lake until today, Mr. Dupill respects and empowers the staff to be the strongest and most effective professionals they can be. He believes in our capabilities as educators and provides us with an environment to teach, study, and learn." One more page. Seventh grade math teacher Lori Parker wrote, "Thank you to Mr. Dupill for outstanding ability to work with families. Jim has a way of de-escalating situations that can be problematic and knowing Jim has a way of de-escalating situations that can be problematic and knowing how to find reasonable solutions for concerns that put students and learning first. He has been creative and tireless in his work. I appreciate his hard work and support through all these years." Seventh grade science teacher Michelle Chafee wrote, "I wanted to write this note to let you know how much all your hard work and dedication to our school community has meant to me personally and professionally. Your undying support for our staff and students is taken on many forms. For example, this year's back-to-school cookout to celebrate our in-person comeback was heartwarming, and students will have these memories thanks to you. This cookout was no small affair, and you have always made every event bigger and better than the previous one. It's about making the school a better place, and you're all about it. You will be leaving a legacy here. Academically, our school thrives under your guidance, our students' test scores will be envy of many districts. You had high expectations, but were willing to do whatever it took to help us meet them. Your door is always open, and you have been such a great listener, whether it was a teacher asking for help in the classroom or a student looking for support. Words cannot begin to describe how thankful we are for the work you have done for our school." Eighth grade E L A teacher Lauren Jenkins wrote, "I have had the pleasure of working with Jim for the past eleven years. Through these years, I believe it would be an understatement to say that he's thrown his heart and soul into the process. Right from the very start, it was clear that Jim was passionate about his job and making the school a place where the students could access quality curriculum and at the same time feel nurtured and loved. Jim pushed for this environment for his staff as well. His kindness shone throughout, and his consistent passion for all of his staff members was impressive. Most of all, I will miss his passion for things such as the haunted hallways and our epic field days. His excitement for these events will surely be difficult to match, it's true. Thanks, Jim, for all that you are and all that you have done." In closing, uh, Mr. Dupill has been a wonderful principal and a tireless advocate for our students, as well as a supporter for our staff. Throughout good times and bad, we have known that our school was led by someone who truly cared about all of us and wanted only the best for all the members of our school community. We will miss his caring, his kindness, his enthusiasm, and his warmth. Mr. Dupill has forever changed our middle school for the better, and we're so sad to see him go. On behalf of my colleagues at the middle school and the Silver Lake Education Association, I wish Mr. Dupill the very best in his future endeavors. Did you send that case to any interviews, Jim?
Well, I mean, that was overwhelming, and I really do appreciate that. I'm not gonna say goodbye tonight, because as I said, my staff tomorrow, still gonna wake up, and still a lot of work to do, so I will say goodbye at the end of the year, but, um, it just, there's a lot still to, to make happen for our kids before the end of the year, so.
And I think as a closing tribute, we should all go to your field day.
It is an event.
Yes, it is.
Guys are all welcome to come, of course. Um, so, thank you guys for everything, so I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, John, that was, that was great sharing all that with us. Okay, administrative review. Um, we have not had a meeting since our last one, but as Jill indicated, and as the committee had talked about last time we met, there, we will be distributing the annual evaluation, and then collecting it, and then coming back together to review that, so. Um, C T E?
No meeting. Um, I did reach out to Elliot to see if he wants to connect with us, if he means spring or not, um, but I was working to get some data, because we're curious, the applications and member spaces and that, I don't know.
Great. On the C T E, can I ask a quick question?
Hmm?
So the, um, the landscaping up front of the admin building, that, that students assumed did, well, the black of landscaping, I guess we'll call it now?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it really does shine a light on, don't get it wrong, because you live in that building.
The beauty?
The beauty, the raw beauty of that building. Especially the beauty of the roof that's probably forty years old-ish. Um, that is a bit of a pet project of yours, and since you're not running through with it, so. Um, but you gotta have a fixie for your leave. I actually shouldn't replant anything up, I'm just completely shone the beauty of that building. Wow, we need to do something about that.
I'll message Elliot, see what's, what's there.
Yes!
More color, so that you can add more features.
I would like that I pardon your students' pin, your buildings. Okay. Sorry.
So-
I thought it was inside, but I was like-
Chairman's report, I, I actually have something a little interesting to share with you folks. Um, I was contacted by Jim Hickey, who is a selectman in Hanson, and he is also chairing a subcommittee they have, the D-Regionalization Feasibility Subcommittee. So apparently Hanson and Whitman are considering splitting, as, as we did a number of years ago with Pembroke. So he has contacted us to, on, on two fronts. First, to, um, gain any information that we may have from our experience. Some of us, and I'm, I'm dating myself here, kind of participated and, and recall some of that, I've been around that long. Um, and then secondly, they would like to perhaps explore the idea of joining Silver Lake. That's, that's a, a huge idea, it's very preliminary. Um, it would be years in the making, and it would take a lot of town agreements and, and all sorts of things. It's, it's even earlier than infancy. But the idea is being floated in Hanson, they've contacted us. Um, what I would, um, and I've, I've contacted Russell on this as well. Um, what I believe the next logical step would be is notify the three towns via the Board of Selectmen, send a letter out and let them know that we've been contacted on a preliminary basis. And then if Hanson wants to have an actual dialogue, we'll bring people to the table. This is very early on, it may not come to anything, but you've been contacted, I want to make you aware and make the towns aware.
Grade sevens, you thought?
All to be determined, they realize that we are regionalized seventh through twelve. Um, more to come, they're interested in talking to us, at least at this time, so.
Are we interested in talking to them?
I don't know that that is up to us. I think that, and that's why my suggestion, and Russell agreed with me, I believe our next step is to inform the three towns, because I, I think that's a, that's a bigger decision than, than us. So I, I would like to, um, Karen, I'll, I'll work with you to just send out some, not more than what I've just said, high-level, um, notification that we've been, um, contacted and expect to hear from Hanson, um, in the short run, I think. Okay. So that was unusual. Um, legislative agent.
Just trying to focus after that. All right, so, um, I gave some of my legislative updates during the meeting tonight. Um, one of the things I just want to tag onto, Chris Edman of the admin building, um, you know, you've heard me compliment his work with the three towns trying to get the ARPA funds for the H back systems for our two buildings. And there's only so many dollars for infrastructure to be spent, and you know Christine's done multiple projects where we've had roof replacements at some of the schools in the area. Um, the Mass School Building Authority is getting more and more strict and having less and less matching dollars. So a lot of these projects are falling on the laps of the locality, so. Um, we were hoping for a hundred billion dollars in the infrastructure bill dedicated to public schools in the United States, and that got shelved. This week, President Biden put out a five-hundred-million-dollar, which is half a percent of a hundred billion, for school infrastructure grants, but it's needs-based, and there's still some schools out there that are a hundred-twenty years old and can't be retrofitted with proper H back systems. So, looking down the road at the admin building, um, you know, we're gonna have to be very creative and keep pushing to see if there's some sort of relief for the localities to make sure that's something that we can do in the near future. Because I think a lot of us realize what, what a travesty our admin building is, and, you know, we, we can't sustain that for much longer, especially with the A D A compliance issues. Um, other than that, uh, M A S C is having its annual Day on the Hill next Thursday. Uh, it's virtual this year, it's from nine-thirty to twelve, it's online, you guys, welcome to come visit. Um, the keynote speakers are Chair Dallas Loish and Chair Jason Lewis of the John Kennedy on Education. And, uh, if you sign on, you might hear me talking for a little bit too, but those are the stars of the show. Um, June eleventh, we have a charting the course. Again, this is mandated by state law, that all school committee members within their first year take this training, six hours long, it's at Upper Cape Regional, so it's pretty close by. And John Creed has a little bit of a relationship with Upper Cape as well, if that means anything to any of you, it does mean. Um, but again, that's June eleventh, so it would be after everyone's election, so you can send our new colleagues, our friends, down to that to make sure that they're in compliance with M G L.
Jason, quick question, we're, Day on the Hill is virtual, is it gonna be taped?
So it was last year, and it was posted to the M A S C website, yeah, so you don't have to be there for the data.
Okay, cool, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, negotiations, we will need to go into a brief executive session after this meeting. Um, path is meeting tonight. Policy, no meeting. Um, revolving funds, no meeting, safer, we have not met since the-
Not one week, huh?
Yeah. Um, Treasuries Report.
Oh, you didn't give it to me? I did, I left it out here space.
Oh. Oh, there it is.
Uh, total accounts payable, one million eighty thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Total payroll, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Bringing the grand total to one million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add that because our meeting would normally have been next week, this is a little early, looking for your normal meeting schedule, so we will still have additional warrants for next week. This is everything we have ready as of this time, so for next week, I will be sending them electronically for signatures to those folks that are on, thank you.
Nice. Thank you. Um, Union Thirty-One, no meeting. Um... Warrants, we're good?
Yeah, we didn't, there were no signature warrants, which is from last week to now.
Yeah. Okay, um, before we take a motion to go into executive session, dates to remember, Good Friday coming up on the fifteenth, spring break coming up beginning the eighteenth. Um, town meeting on the fourteenth, is that Halifax?
That's Kingston's meeting.
That's Kingston's?
Is that the first one?
Uh, Hal- Halifax is the ninth.
Okay, knew we were first.
Kingston will be the fourteenth, and Clinton will be the eighteenth.
Okay. Um, say those again, I'm sorry.
Halifax is May ninth, Monday, May ninth.
Yep.
Kingston is Saturday, May fourteenth.
Yep.
And Clinton is Wednesday, day eighteen.
Wednesday, eighteen, okay. We do, it's a joint though, right? A virtual joint on the twenty-sixth? Yes. Um, and then the next Silver Lake meeting is on May nineteenth, um, day after the food concert. Um, if I could have a motion from somebody to go into executive session not to return to public?
I make a motion that we enter into executive session pursuant to M G L Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one oh seven, if I were asked under the authority of any general or specific clause for the approval of executive session minutes of three seventeen twenty-two and three thirty-one twenty-two, and pursuant to M G L Chapter Thirty A, Section Two A three, for the purpose of conducting negotiations, uh, not to return to regular session.
Sorry.
Okay. Um, Wood? Here you go.
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Liz Leian?
Yes.
And Liz Leian?
Yes.
Thank you all.